Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Town Council Committee of the whole special meeting agenda for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. All town councillors are present with the exception of Councillor Melendez, who is out of town on family business. Mayor Hendrick?
All city councillors are present with the exception of Councillor Depot and Councillor Ortiz. May I excuse?
Thank you. So, the first item on the agenda is 2020-68 Thame Street repairs. This is on page two of the Town Council packet. And would you like to do a little bit of introduction, Mayor Hendrick?
Sure.
If I could just, before we start, when you're recognized to speak, if you could just use a mic, please. That way it's captured for the videographer. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, last year, we had a significant rain event where we have about three or four inches in an hour and a half, two hours, and that washed out part of Thame Street. If you go down Thame Street to the end toward Electric Boat, you have Thame Street, Smith Street coming down, Paquonic Road coming down, and Eastern Point Road coming down. That area got washed out. So, we've been working with the engineers to get a quote for the repair, and we have the cost of the repair is going to be $316,481.50. So, the way that we're going to pay for this is we had leftover highway money from last year's budget that we're going to use at the sum of $193,512. And then, I worked with Electric Boat, and Electric Boat is going to provide $53,000, and then the difference is $69,969.50 for that road repair. And we were going to start this week, but we had some challenges with one of the contractors. We should start in the next couple of weeks, and then it should take less than two months to complete.
Do any councillors have questions, or Mr. Burt, did you want to address this at all?
I had mentioned this previously to the council, that this was upcoming, and luckily the amount being asked for is less than I had originally thought. I don't see an issue with using contingency dollars to pay for it. It will, of course, have to go through our process and go through the RTM.
Very good. And I saw Councillor O'Brye. Are you going to call your own councillors? Because I saw Councillor Carter. Councillor O'Brye?
In reading this, Malone and MacBroom, I think it is, they're doing actually everything. They're doing the engineering, they're doing the construction.
Well, they're not doing the construction. Let's see, who did I hire? They did all the engineering, but the company that had the low bid was American Industries.
Okay, so there'll be another company coming in? I didn't see a second company mentioned in here.
It's on page two. It's on page two of our agenda, in the second paragraph. Last sentence of the second paragraph.
Wait a second. I know I got it here someplace.
With the letter, and if you go to the second paragraph, it's the last sentence there.
Thank you.
American Industries Incorporated was chosen as the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, though, their cost is also in here?
All the costs are included. I had a breakdown of Malone and MacBroom. For $31,000 in the construction administration inspection, $51,000 in the American Industries reconstruction with a 10% contingency is $234,481.50, and that's what brings us up to the preliminary cost of $316,481.50.
Thank you.
So, we tried to break this out so that it would be easy to discuss.
Councillor?
Councillor Carter?
Just a quick question. So, as a city council, we had previously voted for the funds, but that was prior to Electric Boat coming on board. So, my question is, are we paying for the funds, or are we equally splitting the funds offhand, or is there going to be reimbursement from Electric Boat?
At the end, toward the end of the construction project, we will invoice Electric Boat for $53,000, and they'll send us a check.
Yep, gotcha.
Councillor Franco?
If there are overages, where will that money come from?
If there are overages, we're coming back.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, this is an estimate. This is an estimate, but it's a, that's why we put the 10% contingency in. But if there are overages, we'll have another conversation.
Okay. Just because there could be things that are in there that they're not sure of yet?
Well, we don't think so. It took us a while with the engineering to go in there and excavate, not excavate, but to evaluate what we needed to do. Because if you go down there, the way these, this wall was put, the wall was put, it is on the line. So, half of it's on EB's property, half of it is on my property, and then the fence, their outer perimeter fence, which is the, the outer perimeter fence, which is part of the security barrier, was there. And so, they had, we had to wash out and undermine that wall, and now what we're going to do instead of us, because it was literally a stone wall. So, now that's going to be excavated, we're going to pour a base, and then we're going to have preformed concrete barriers, interlocking barriers, that are going to provide that support for that roadway.
Okay, thank you. So, I have other town councillors. Do you have any city councillors?
Any more city councillors have a question?
Councillor Zepari?
I understand that you're going to use money that's a surplus. Thank you. I understand that much of the money that will go into this will be surplus funds from a prior budget that you didn't expend. Is that correct?
From last year's budget, that's correct.
And do you expect the town to reimburse you for that surplus, or?
No, that was money, that was money that was surplus. And on a go-forward basis, one of the things we're going to be doing is when we have surplus, we'll be applying that to future budgets. That way, we're not double, we're not double charging the town or anything like this.
Okay.
This was money from roads and highways, from the roads and highways budget.
No, I just noticed that on some of the, we have several resolutions related to this, and on some of them, that you were looking for reimbursement from the town. And you're looking for reimbursement for the portion that you don't already have money for. Am I correct?
The, well, the way we wrote our original resolutions, where in order to get authorization from my council, we had to say we were going to go back to the town. So, what we did was, if you look at the resolutions, and you follow from the top, there's a resolution for $31,000. There's a resolution for $51,000, and there's a resolution for $234,481.50. And then, that is the total cost of the project. And then, we used highway funds, overage from last year, and then we subtracted the, what I negotiated with Electric Boat, and then the difference is what we're asking the town to provide.
And what's the difference?
Does that answer your question?
Yes, what's the difference that you're asking the town?
The final difference is $69,969.50.
I think that this is something-
And that's on this-
This is something that must be done. We have this fictitious distinction between the city and the town. We are one town. The taxpayers in the, in the city of Groton pay town taxes, as well as some city taxes. And it's their community, and we have, it's our community, and we have a responsibility to take care of it. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't sinking money and then having to replenish the money that had already been surplused. Thank you.
Do you have other city councillors?
City councillor?
No. Okay, so we have Councillor Bordalain, and then O'Brye.
Thank you. As, you know, Councillor Zepari stated, you know, we are one town, and the roads are important. But as we speak about this, there are roads in this town that were in disarray before this even erosion happened. I know Route 1 heading into Mystic has got that barrier that's up, that's been up for a while. And so, it's, I believe this should be repaired, but we need to take priority on all of our roads in this town. And I think both of these, considering how the, that retaining wall on Route 1 by the historic sign, that nice historic Mystic sign that just got repainted and re-put up, and then that whole side's in disarray, and has been like that for, I don't even want to say the years. I don't even know if I can remember exactly. And now this. So, this seems to me this is something that we should be looking, as climate's changing and everything like that, we should be looking into. State funding also, seeing if there's a possibility of any help from the state from an environmental standpoint, packaging this in, letting our state reps know that we have roads that are, have been sitting for several years. These are the types of things, I think, when the state reps come, that would be great to kind of collaborate on a little sooner, maybe, possibly, and maybe bring that forward. So, I'm just curious if, you know, we can see, based on the fact that, you know, EB is our, you know, our big employer of the town, and the state has put a lot of money and investment into that town because it's the employer, 50% of the wall is on EB's property, they're not paying based on this 50%, and wondering if any state help. I think if the state actually knew that EB's wall, 50% of it, is in disarray, and that it was going to be across the town, I'm wondering if we could possibly seek some help.
We made that ask when we did our letters to our legislature, to the legislators that came before us.
Electric, okay.
Do you have, I'm sorry.
Well, I want to respond in that, Electric Boat is not responsible for 50% of the entire construction project. The wall is on the coastal line, so we have part of the wall in there, we have the fence in there, we have some other removal stuff in there. So, we went through, and we lined item, and I negotiated with Electric Boat the items that we, everybody felt, let me define everybody, the engineers, the public works, me, and Electric Boat felt was proper, and that's where we come up with the $53,000. The, the reason that I'm coming is because the special act is what requires this. So, that's why I'm coming to the town.
Do you have a city councillor? If not, we have more town councillors that wish to speak.
No, ma'am.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, do.
Councillor Bordalain?
Can you just clarify for me the special act that you're speaking of, Mayor Hendrick? Just so I can understand.
There was a special act in 1903, there was a special act in 1964. This one is referring to the special act in 1933, but it's what created the city. And there's a line item in there, and this is why when you do roads and highways, when we come to you later, and then the last item here, the Highway Funds Committee, Highway Funds Committee is going to come from my charter. But the special act said that the town is responsible for those monies that are necessary and proper for the repairing and making of roads in the city of Groton, which are town roads. That's the line item in that special act. So.
I just have another piece of that. So, that's where I'm, I'm not saying this is not urgent and shouldn't be fixed. I just, no, this is a newer breakdown in the system of roads amongst Groton as a whole city-town that we are responsible for. So, like you stated in that line item, we're responsible for the roads in the town as well, and we have roads currently sitting in disarray, not being repaired, and nothing's been before us currently. So, I feel, as this is urgent, this is a newer breakdown, and the Route 1, other sections of the town haven't been addressed. So, I'm just speaking from a collaborative standpoint of the whole town, and I think it's important, and I respect Mayor Hendrick for coming before us with this from the 19, you know, 33 thing that says the town has to repair them, but the town also has to repair its own roads, too. And so, I just want to make sure somehow that we are prioritizing Groton as a whole, and that's my standpoint.
Councillor O'Brye is next.
The only question I had, the only question I had was the fence. Will we be replacing the fence? Do you have to take that down in the process of doing this? I'm just wondering-
Well, not all of it. We're going to, some of the fence is already removed, some of the fence is already removed, and we have jersey barriers up with fencing material on there that's acting, that is tied in and chainlocked, so that provides a security barrier for Electric Boat. But there is, there will be fencing that will actually be embedded into this retaining wall. And the retaining wall is to hold the road up. The fencing is there. If you walk the perimeter of the fence, you'll see that there's even cement at the bottom of the fence so that people can't dig up and under, in addition to the barbed wire at the top so that you can't go over.
I just thought, if it's new fence, it might be an opportunity, even if it's a small patch or something, to put something up that looks a whole lot better. The fencing down there is pretty shabby, for what it's worth.
I said that, too.
Did you?
I heard.
All right.
All right. Any other town councillors? Councillor Heath? I'm sorry, please jump in if you have city councillors.
Just wanted to ask if during the reconstruction project, will the remediation, will there be remediations that if there should be another rain event like that, this problem won't happen again? Thank you.
Could you ask that again, or ask it a different way?
So, you had a three and a half, three, three and a half inches of rain, and it created a problem. It washed out the road. So, is that drainage issue going to be remediated as part of this?
Well, so, during the construction of Thame Street several years ago, there was a 48-inch line that was put in to cut, to take care of this, because that, that area down there where all those streets converge used to flood routinely. Because what happens is you get sheeting that comes off Sacred Heart, comes down, you get sheeting, comes down Paquonic, comes down Smith, comes down Eastern Point, and then overflows the MS, not the MS4, what is part of MS4, but the grate there. And we had backups there. We, one of the things we identified is there was a, the 48 inches is usually enough, but there was a line that had been shut off inside EB's area, and that may have contributed to part of this. We're not 100% sure of that. But we're not, we're not digging up any more drainage. We think we should be okay, because this was a crazy event. The thing we have down there now is so that we didn't have other washout, is we put curbing there in storm drains. We think the way this is engineered, with the, with the fix of this, we shouldn't have this anymore. But, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to guarantee, I'm not going to give you 100% guarantee that we're never going to have a washout. Because if you go to look at the way that, that wall was constructed, that was literally stone on top of stone, because it was constructed years and years and years ago. We're going to have new construction there with modular technology, and we should not have that issue. But things happen.
Councillor Bordalain?
One more question, when he brought up the storm. I don't remember what meeting I was at, but it was stated that there might have been some drainage issues coming up from the top of the hill from Monument that are backing up and also running down. Are those also going to be addressed? Because all that kind of piles and pools on the lower part, so.
Well, not as part of this. We, we are looking at our drainage in our storm drains. The, we're looking at the sheeting issues, and one of the things we're looking at as part of the MS4 is the impervious surfaces. And, and we're going to be coming up with a plan to minimize, actually to reduce some of the impervious surfaces that we have, and go from paving, go from paved to gravel so that the water percolates through. So, we have, we have looked at and have put in the size drainage that we think that we need for typical rains. We haven't had problems except for this since we put that 48-inch line in.
All right. Thank you very much. We are on to 2020-41, short-term rentals, and I'm just going to give a brief overview of what I took away from the meeting, and then the mayor can jump in with his. As you know, we've been, we had people speak at one of our recent meetings regarding the issue of short-term rentals, and we're going to be doing a little working group. We had a meeting that Mayor Hendrick called with Mayor Passero, First Selectman Allen from Ledgerd, First Selectman Cheeseborough from Stonington the other day, and I thank you for calling that meeting. And it was very productive, and it was kind of a higher level, what we're going to try to do at the town level, where they brought to the table what they've experienced in their towns, the solutions that they've tried already, things that failed, things that are in process. And so, we have that information that I'll be disseminating to our council. I don't know what Mayor Hendrick intends to do. And then, we had ideas taken away from what worked for these other municipalities, and we may slightly tweak what we had originally intended to do, and I want to talk about that with you all later, but it's not going to be tonight that we'll discuss that. Perhaps having a different format, and then doing the small working group that we had talked about earlier. But it was very productive, and I will be distributing an ordinance that Ledgerd has worked up, so you can take a look at that. And Mr. Burt, on our end, shared all the information that we were provided at the meeting that we had, the very thick packet of the article from the Economic Institute and from COG, and I can't even remember where else. But it was a good meeting because it was a sharing kind of thing. We all brought stuff to the table, we took stuff away, and they're interested in looking at what we're going to be doing, too. So, it was good. It was a good first step, good for us, and I'll bring that information to you in a future meeting. So, did you want to add anything, Mr. Mayor Hendrick?
Yeah. We, Mayor Grantowski reached out to me. I am going to be on the committee. I have not asked my council yet if any of them want to be on the committee, but I'll be offering that soon. We are currently looking at it at the committee level, and then at some point in concert with this, we will have a public information session where we talk about short-term rentals. And part of that is going to be an information session so that people understand what they're really talking about. Because we do have, it is a large issue, but people are throwing around terms, and they don't necessarily know what the terms mean. And just because you say it doesn't make it true. So, we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. It will also be an opportunity to get feedback from citizens on the process, and then we will take that information, and then we will move forward. And then, like I said, I'm going to be working with Mayor Grantowski on the committee, and then we will come up with a solution, and then the town will implement their corrective action, the city will implement their corrective action, and then we will move forward.
I'm just going to add to that, if there is to be corrective action. So, there may, there may not be anything, that once, once everything is looked at, you know, the working group may decide that there's nothing. They may come back with a recommendation, at which point, then the whole council's going to have to decide. But we're going into this open. We need to have people sitting in the working group that are also people that rent their homes out. And you know people in the community that, I don't want to use the trade name, but that do the short-term rentals in their homes, and there are some that are perfectly fine and have no issues. And then, we heard from Mr. Allen that he has a huge issue with one of his that's actually labeled a party house. We don't have any of those, fortunately. But we need to hear from everybody. So, Councillor Parker?
And that was going to be my question, is to ensure that we invite the ones who do rent, do that type of renting. Because I understand that there were citizens who were complaining, but we need both sides to hear the full story.
Well, and the other thing we really need to be careful of is, one, is going to be a delicate balance between the rights of the homeowners and the rights of the people that surround the homeowners. The other issue is, you have to be very careful about unintended consequences. And we may say, okay, somebody says, okay, I want an ordinance where if you're in a short-term rental, you can't park on the lawn. Well, if you're going to do it for them, you got to do it for everybody. And that means during sale fest, when you're having all your people over, and you're going down to the beach, and everybody's parking in the yard, guess what? You don't get to do it anymore. So, that's an unintended consequence. So, there are things that we need thorough investigation, evaluation of it, and it's not as cut and dried as some people would think that it is. If it were that easy, the state would have already weighed in, and the feds would have already weighed in, and they haven't. So, this is a challenge that we have. We are taking it very seriously, and we are going to do our due diligence. And the translation of that is, it's going to take a little bit of time. So, you're going to need to be patient.
And I would just add that we have, the town of Groton has considerably more of these properties in the town than Ledgerd, Stonington, New London. We have way more, from what I was gathering. But what you do need to know is Ledgerd acted on 10 complaints, and they've written an ordinance. So, you have, you have all kinds of, we really need to sit and look at everything, and it is going to be a long process to get through it all. But, so that's, we just wanted to update on that, because there isn't really anything for discussion at this point. And if there are other councillors, I have two councillors, Councillor Bordalain and Councillor Franco, that are interested and serving on that. If there are other councillors, please let me know. So, that takes us to 2019-520- I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. Are you saying that the city and town are going to do this separately, or are we going to work together?
Both.
Okay. What will we do together, and what will we do separately?
So, so, the, the working group that we agreed to put together at one of our recent meetings-
Which recent meeting?
Which date was it?
Our council? Is that what you're saying?
Was it last week, Mr. Burt? Yes. So, at that, we agreed to have a working group. And at that point, I asked for people to come to the table and represent all parts of town, and I extended an invitation to the city to come, as well as Groton, Longpoint, and Noank Fire District, because they were all working on this individually. And so, people from those areas will be sitting in with us, and will be picking their brains. That doesn't mean that the city is going to do the same thing. It's kind of a sharing situation where we're going to all sit and talk together, and then Mayor Hendrick is going to be functioning on his own as a separate municipality as well. So, it's together and then side by side. Hopefully, we can work something out that's good for everybody.
I have committed to Mayor Grantowski that I would come to the meetings, and I would provide, try to provide somebody else to go to the meetings, so that we work together on this as a group. My planner is also working with the town planner to address this issue. But I already have a process started where it was referred to my committee. And so, my committee is going to meet, currently scheduled to meet next week to finish, have the police chief report out, because they've already had one other meeting. And then, I'd already decided that we were going to have a public information session, and I continue, I intend to continue to do that. And I see no negative impact to having that and still working in concert with Mayor Grantowski.
Okay. And my other question, if I might, is the meeting that you did have, is there any minutes from that to give us guidance?
No, I'm going to give you an update, and I'm going to give you copies of what Mr. Allen provided. I just haven't had a chance, because it was yesterday, and I worked today. So, and now I'm here. So, it'll be a while before I get it to you.
And although he has a, it is a draft ordinance-
Yes.
And he is not convinced that he's going to be able to get it through his council? So, you know, we, this is a, this is a larger issue, and one of the things that came out yesterday is that we all have issues with short-term rentals. But we all have different issues with short-term rentals.
Right.
And so, what fits for one may not fit for all. And, and that's why a one-size-fits-all fix is probably not going to be appropriate, but we need to work together. There's synergy by working together, and then coming up with a solution.
I think it's a great idea.
And thank you for pointing out. We, what we did find was that everybody has different issues. Very, very different issues. So, it's good to hear what people have tried and what's worked, but we know that that solution may not fit for Groton.
Councillor Bordalain?
Yes, I just want to double-check. I know we said Groton, Longpoint, Noank, city. I just want to make sure, does Mumford Cove fall into that category, or do we need to reach out to them, or maybe not, doesn't even really matter as far as the way it goes? If it's, if it was to come up for the town, would that cover that area as well, or how would that work?
As far as if we took any action, Mumford Cove would be included. No one from Mumford Cove has expressed any concern about the matter, nor reached out as far as participating.
Is there any point of contact, just for full transparency, to make sure?
You're welcome to reach out, because I know you want to serve on this committee. So, you're welcome to reach out to Mumford Cove.
Okay. So, there might be a point of contact, just in, just in case they haven't heard of it, to make sure they're included.
Feel free. All right. So, we are on to 3C, 2019-526-2, Sustainability and Climate Resilience Manager. I'm going to let Mr. Burt start this, and then if Mayor Hendrick wants to jump in, he looks thrilled.
Can you pass the mic, please, to Mr. Burt? Thank you.
The town council has discussed the need for-
The town council has discussed the need for this position for a while now. As we know, there's more and more issues with flooding of streets, need for policy, need to update our... Or to create a resilience plan. But as we brought it to the council, I think consensus from my take was that everyone thought there was some sort of need, but there was some discussion should be part-time, full-time timing of funding it. I was asked to reach out to other municipalities to see if they want to participate. Stonington originally did indicate they had some interest, but then Mayor Hendrick reached back to me. We've had several discussions about sharing the position, initially talking about a 50-50 split and then we'd have to work out... There's a lot of details you have to work out in an agreement, of course. But I think they've got a grant, and he can fill you in on that, where they're starting to work on some of these same things and they see a need for the same position. It seems like a good fit because a lot of the things that they're planning might come out with might be things we end up having to fund in the city. So it makes sense for us to be sharing that position to look at this.
Thank you. We went after a grant and we are going to... We are going to hire somebody to do a resiliency study in the city. So we're doing that. We're also working with the Coast Guard Academy, with the cadets for four different projects that they're going to do for us as their senior projects, junior and senior projects. We had talked about whether or not we need a resiliency manager. If you look at the information that's out there, there's an estimate of 20-inch increase by 2050. So if you... Some people are saying, well, wait a minute, that's 30 years from now. Well, if you look at it from a municipality point of view, that's right around the corner because municipalities don't tend to work that quickly. One of the things that we have to look at is infrastructure and those kinds of things. So we... John and I were talking about this position to determine, and we're still working through the details about where the individual is sitting, those kind of things. And the things that we're trying to anticipate and work on now is to not get two years or three years down the road. And people are pointing fingers these days and say, well, they're doing 50%, 51% for you and 49% for me and back and forth. So right now, what we're trying to do is look at projects that affect all of us because there are certain projects that are going to affect the entire town, town and city. And like I said, Dennis is working with John and we are looking at these things in totality and what this person would help manage. And this individual could also go after some grants. Because, you know, let's be frank about this real quick. So 30 years from now, let's say we want to... Let's say we want to do something, we're going to do... We're going to spend $100,000 a year on resiliency. First of all, you're going to have a hard time because people are going to say, you know what? I got to worry about my kids, my grandkids. I'm not going to be here 30 years from now. I'm not going to give you $100,000 a year. But if you do $100,000 a year, what do you got in 30 years? You've got $3 million. What's that going to do for resiliency? Now you're 20 inches higher. So, okay, let's be really serious about this. We're going to put away $1 million a year. So you get the same argument, I don't want to do this because I can barely balance my checkbook with what I make. I don't need another $1 million a year. But if you go $1 million a year, 30 years, that's $30 million. What is $30 million going to do if you're 20 inches up? So we need to be thinking alternatives and funding and grants and other things that we could do. And so that's what this is about and that's where the resiliency manager comes in, in my book.
So go ahead and then I want to jump in.
Just to put out there, what I'm looking for... I myself am looking for tonight is consensus on whether you want us to continue down this path on negotiating an agreement to bring back to the councils.
So I just wanted to add that this council, the last council actually, put in place the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force because we did recognize that this is an issue that's coming up. And we have some very dedicated volunteers who are working diligently. But we need a professional on staff that can go after grant funds for us, that can do the work that they need, that the volunteers need, and put it all together for us. And I see this as a great opportunity for us to work with the city and to show that we can. We can work together. And these are problems that aren't going to stop at the border, you know, on Bridian Street Extension. These are problems that cross borders, right? So if we can work together on this, I think it would be fruitful for all of us to join in. So I'm hoping that there's no objection to offering Mr. Burt the consensus that he needs to pursue this further. Is there any objection at this point to having Mr. Burt move forward with this work with Mayor Hendrick? I see no objection. Wonderful. Thank you. So we are on to the last item. And what we're looking for here, 2020-69 Highway Funds Committee. I'm looking for volunteers who would like to serve on this and then I will select people that will actually go on behalf of the town and meet with the city to consider their budget. So are there any town council volunteers that would like to participate in... I believe Blaster was councillor Schmidt, councillor Atwater and councillor Heath, correct?
Correct.
So any volunteers to serve on this committee? Councillor Zepari?
Put his hand up to cough. Get him.
I just have a question. Do we know what night it's going to be done?
No, that would be between you and Mayor Hendrick.
Well, and because we have three committee members on, I'll let that out here in just a second once you're done. But you guys will need to get together and let, you know, find out when you want to do it. Sorry. Work together, find out when you want to do it. And then we will have my finance director and Tim Emmerich, the Public Works Department director, be there and present. I'll be there, but I will not be presenting. This is where three councillors and three councillors get together and discuss and then we bring it... It gets brought to the whole committee when we're discussing the budget.
I'll be interested. I just don't know the time.
So just... Any councillors can go. It's a public meeting, so anyone can attend this. But we just need three to commit to going there and actually working through it. So I have councillors Zepari, councillor Bordelain. Is there a third? Councillor Heath. Thank you.
And we have councillor Depot, deputy mayor Beckford and councillor Sanford.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. So that takes us to the end of the agenda. I'll take a town council motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker. All the town councillors in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:09 for our town council committee, the whole. Mayor Hendrick?
Okay, I'll take a motion from the city council to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Time is 17:00.
Thank you very much. We don't need to be on the speaker.